A few minutes.
So Commissioner May, other than opening and closing our meeting, we'll just have everyone direct everything through you to recognize people to try to keep some resemblance of order.
Sure, that sounds, that sounds good. I'll go ahead and call it to order and then turn it over, over to you to do the same on your side.
Perfect.
We're looking forward to it. Glad you're, glad you're all joining us.
Yeah, we got, we got three of them. One more and we will have a quorum.
Very good.
There we go. We at least have a quorum.
Excellent. Looks like one minute to go. That's good.
Greg, glad to see you're up today.
Give me a track.
See muted.
Hey Kent, good to see you too buddy. Looks like you combed your hair looking good.
Oh shoot.
Commissioner May, good morning. It is now eight o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much Director Wong. Welcome everyone to the October 22nd Joint ACHD City of Meridian Meeting. I will now call the ACHD Commission portion to order and note for the record that all commissioners are present. Mayor Simison, if you would please do the same for the city?
Thank you. As you said, for the record, it is October 22nd at 8:00 a.m. We have four of our current council members present at this time. If we could identify for, just do a quick roll call. I'll do that Mr. Clerk. So Councilman Burke?
Present.
Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Holblin?
Here.
And I do not see that we have Councilman Cavanagh or Councilwoman Pro at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Just one housekeeping point of order. If everybody could just mute their microphone when someone else is speaking, it just cuts down on a little bit of that interference. So with that, Mayor Simison, and welcome again, everyone. We're glad to have you here with us today. We'll turn it over to you as you have the first item here on the agenda.
Thank you Commissioner May. So in my regular meetings with the Director Wong and Council, Commission President, the conversation of Linder Road Overpass has come up. And when the city sent our five-year work plan comments in, we noted that this was a high priority for the city of Meridian and even identified a few projects that we would recommend maybe downgrading in order to move it up in ACHD's consideration. It's been something that the previous councils have really, I think the last two years, they've really started to move this one higher up on the priority and has gained greater interest from the council. And this council, it still remains high on the interest. So in our conversations, it was recommended that we have a joint discussion about this specific project. So that we could express our interest in moving this forward and hear from the commission, your viewpoints on this project and what it would take in order for it to move forward in an appropriate fashion. Obviously with spanning the interstate, it has its own challenges with, have to work with ITD and those elements. So we want to be proactive as much as we can to get this project ready for consideration and into the five-year work plan and move it forward. So that's where I will go ahead and stop my comments. And for the record, we do have all of our council members with Councilwoman Pro and Councilman Cavanagh now joining us on the call. So I will, I will ask Councilman Cavanagh anyways, as a member of our Transportation Commission, if he sits on that with them, if he has anything else that we need to add from conversations at that, at our Transportation Commission level.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. And tough to respond. I was in the meeting, but for whatever reason wasn't added in as a panelist until about the last, I don't know, 10, 15 seconds of your comment. So I think that we're okay to proceed. And if something pops up, then we can always add that as maybe a future discussion item at a later date.
Okay, perfect. So that's where we are. I could go into a little bit more background and the conversations we've had with Compass over the last year, year and a half. You know, but I think from our standpoint, we, we want to express our desire and interest in elevating this project to a higher level of consideration by the commission. And would love to hear from the commission what that will take in order to make that a possibility.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Simison. I, one question I would have is an update on any discussions or dialogue commitment that you have gotten from ITD? Have you had this conversation with them about their position? Is this on their radar?
It's on their radar. And just like we may have heard from some of your staff, they want a commitment from ACHD that this is a priority before they're willing to commit. So you know, we're in this great little chicken and egg situation where everyone wants the other person to say that it's of importance to them before they're willing to discuss it further. For ITD, honestly, what we've heard is more about the financial commitment. You know, in order for to rate on their modeling, it's about what's the level of investment for return. So it truly is for them, how much money is the local government willing to put in in order to make it score high enough for them to want to move it forward?
I understand that, yeah, batting that ball back and, back and forth across the net. But from our perspective, we would definitely want to have a commitment with a date certain from the ITD side, you know, going forward. That doesn't preclude us having the discussion and talking about different scenarios. But that would be one of the main first steps as far as, as we're concerned.
And so what does that mean from your standpoint, a date certain? Are you asking ITD for a date that they're willing to build it or that they're willing to support it being built?
We would like, yes, building the bridge, a date certain. And I, and I would think that would be something that would just follow along with their commitment to do the project and how it fits into their timeline. So that, that would definitely be a starting, a starting point, a jumping off point, if you will.
Mayor Simison?
We're gonna, just spare one word, just direct to your questions through Commissioner May.
Welcome. Go ahead, Council, Councilwoman.
Thank you. You know, obviously being new to city council, I don't have the background on previous projects that are comparable to this one. But that just seems like, like a pretty firm commitment that you're looking for. Is that typical for past projects of this magnitude to receive a date certain that ITD would actually do that? That seems like a pretty high threshold to me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think if they are going to commit to the project, then they would be able to provide some sort of timeline. Any other commissioners would like to comment on that?
Madam President, I think the ideal and perfect example is what happened when the Cloverdale Bridge needed to be rebuilt. They voiced a commitment that it needed to happen. We said absolutely, you know, even though our share of the construction cost was much more than ITDs, as would be the case with the Linder Bridge, all we need is a nod. And then we're perfectly willing to make pretty much whatever adjustments is necessary with our funding and expenditures to make it happen. And ITD already knows that. And so that's my example.
Thank you Commissioner Goldthorpe. Commissioner Arnold?
I have a suggestion on how we might get ITD to move this up on their priority list or at least get it on their priority list. Has anyone talked with Ada County to see if they're on board with this? Because I think if we could get a joint letter with Ada County, the City of Meridian, and ACHD and send that to the ITD board, that might elevate this and help them understand that this is a priority for, for our jurisdictions in Ada County.
Thank you Commissioner Arnold. I think that would get the, get the attention of ITD and certainly jumpstart and get that ball rolling to show that coordinated effort. I think that would be a great starting point.
Has anyone talked with the Ada County Commissioners about that?
Mayor Simison?
I've not had direct conversations with the majority of the board on the value of the project to get Ada County Commissioners insight. I honestly don't think that that would be, be a hard ask to do. And quite frankly, I'm great to hear this because a joint letter to me says at least it's on ACHD's priorities as well. And that's what we're really looking to establish here. That this is, if you're willing to do a joint letter to ITD that says that this is a priority for ACHD, I think that's a great outcome, if nothing else, from this conversation today.
Yeah, a good start. And certainly then we hopefully would get some sort of commitment, yea or nay, and just see exactly where ITD stands on this. So maybe we can go ahead and, go ahead Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I think another option also is activating the legislative representatives that are in Ada County that would benefit from this bridge going in. I know that a few years ago, there was a, an issue with Highway 16 being very far down on the, on the list of ITD projects. And the legislator, some legislators were extremely concerned about that. And we worked with Compass to move it up. And so then ITD has that on their radar as well. So I think that's, that's something that could be done also.
Yep, I would agree. I think the more, more partners we get together and, and put this letter together and approach ITD, the better. So I think that, like you say, I think that's a good outcome, good action item from this, from this meeting this morning.
Yeah.
Thank you Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've been strongly supportive. I think most of the commissioners supported prioritizing connectivity over widening because connectivity does a lot to reduce the demand for the arterials, a demand on the arteries. And this is the only arterial that doesn't have a bridge over or connection to the freeway. And this summer, when we were doing the budget, we actually included within the motion, Commissioner Goldthorpe asked for a reevaluation of some of those widens. Those are because they are impact fee eligible. And we're at a point where we pretty much paid down our impact fee loan balance. And so we're looking for those things that are impact fee eligible. And connectivity mid-mile currently aren't eligible. This however, I believe is and ought to be impact fee eligible for ACHD's portion of it. So that an adjustment to some of those widening projects, we don't need to widen every single arterial south of the freeway to five lanes. Many of them will function very well at three lanes. Or we certainly don't need to widen them now and can adjust the master street map. So I think that we can get to moving this to a priority over widening, especially south of Victory or south of Amity, some of those arterials, so that, so that the connectivity, which actually provides tremendous amount of relief to those very arterials that we're concerned about. So I think we're closer to that. We just have to push to say, let's make those changes. Sometimes it's hard because those projects have already, I mean, the, the goal of widening some of those on Cloverdale and Five Mile and Maple Grove have all been on the master street map for quite a number of years. But we have made a commitment in the motion this summer to reevaluate those. So they are on the table. And I think that then means we ought to put this at the top and with legal counsel, figure out what aspect of this project could be impact fee eligible, provide that as a match to whatever ITD could do. And then I think we're a lot closer to that.
And just a note too, when we start getting everybody together and doing this joint letter, we should send it to the board, the ITD board.
Yes. Commissioner May?
Yes, Mayor Simison.
Yeah. And, you know, I think the connectivity is a huge aspect to this. I don't know how tuned in the entire commission is about all the, quite frankly, the transportation services that are, that are coming in along Franklin at this point in time between Ten Mile Linder, between the Amazon facility that's going in in that location and the others, the school bus barn and our Republic Services and, and Amazon. And I've just blanked if it's a FedEx or UPS, it's also going in that location. But that's really, you know, having another route through that area to try to reduce the congestion that's likely to occur on Ten Mile and Meridian, which during COVID, they both dropped down, you know, but you can get across those pretty easy right now. And who knows what commute patterns will look like in six to eight months from now. But, you know, having that connectivity in this location will hopefully alleviate what will be more and more traffic for many of those delivery service providers on those two interchanges. And that's the tough part for ITD. They don't see those interchanges as being part of their system. The benefits aren't really taken into consideration when they consider these type of projects. But quite frankly, it's very important to the local transportation connectivity elements. So we're happy to work on a letter and, you know, we'll, we'll work with the appropriate people, ACHD, to draft up that letter. And I'll, I'll take it on myself to talk to the Ada County Commission if we need to do a joint meeting with them. But I think that we can get them engaged rather quickly.
Very good.
Other council members have any comments or questions I'd like to ask, at least related to this?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Holblin.
Please go ahead. Welcome.
No, thank you. Just a comment and I guess a request of ACHD as Commissioner Hanson talked about impact fees. It's clear that, you know, where we spend our impact fees is a little different between our, our two entities and whatnot. It would probably be helpful to us as a council, whether it's Justin or someone else coming at some point in time to workshop to let us know if, if and or when this project goes forward, whenever that is someday, what are the things that ACHD comes to the table with, what, where their money can be spent, what they would provide, those types of things, so we can better understand the details. We know if ITD's on board and it put, you put it on your project list and every, everything's go, it's not going to happen in a year. So what would a timeframe be for something like a, like a bridge? That's not something we, we handle at all. So I'd like to kind of understand it from your perspective, ACHD's perspective, what it takes to do a project like that at, at some future point by, by someone from ACHD, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a good question. I know we've looked at the numbers. Director Wong? I'm not sure who else from the staff yet. Would you like to address this question? It's hypothetical at this point, but.
Well, at the end of the day, again, it's going to come down to the collaborative agreements that the City of Meridian and the Ada County Highway District Commission come to. In this type of project, there is a, of course, funding is always key, timing is always key. It will depend upon, again, the negotiations that the city and the commission has regarding as to how this will be funded, what type of projects that may not go forward in, in Meridian, if this is the key project. And then what type of partnerships you're able to build on this between commercial developers and, and of course, the city and private enterprise. I'd like to relate this, I think, a lot to what the commission and St. Luke's and the City of Boise worked through on the, on the three cities agreement to support St. Luke's and Boise in the expansion of infrastructure that has gone on and continues to go on. That was a good model on this type of, on this type of project going forward. So again, more than happy to have a very, I guess, in-depth briefing to the council at their convenience as to what this may or may take. Again, I would, just listening to the leadership speak, my assumption first is that big first milestone hurdle is to have ITD actually commit to a, this type of project. Because at the end of the day, you know, that's, we don't, we don't own that, that property going over the interstate and such. But we can work through that. So we did that very successfully with the three cities agreement from St. Luke's, of course, the commission and, and the leadership in Boise. That might be a model that we worked for. Does that sort of answer your question? Now for costs for the councilmen, our teams have estimated what this may take, again, looking at how important this is to Meridian. And just, and this is called a WAG or TLR, that looks about right, TLR. And so for design, looking at about one point, if I'm not mistaken, 1.5, 1.6 million dollars for right away, it's 1.9 in that area. To build the, the support systems on both sides of the interstate, which is all we can do, you're looking at 13 million dollars. And then our estimate for a bridge based on the Cloverdale emergency project that ITD would have to come through is about six to seven million dollars. So when it's all said and done, this is a 20 million dollar plus project in today's figures, again, based on the estimates we have. Does that Commissioner May answer your question?
It does for me. And I think this will all kind of grow out organically once we take care of this first step. So Councilman, did that answer?
Yes, Madam Chair, that, that helps. At some point, and I know it's a future point because we have first things first to accomplish. But at some point, you know, as Director Wong said, we're going to sit down and negotiate. I really don't have any idea what, what we, what there is, what, what we need to talk about. So that's just kind of helping us understand it from a high level of what those things are that have to be accomplished to reach agreement in, in the future. So that would just help us as we prepare. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're very welcome.
Madam Chair, one, one thing I would.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah. And that is, having learned lessons, I'm sure you've learned the same lessons. This, hopefully all that would be built north of the freeway would be a two, three lane connection. This is a neighborhood with an elementary school and lots of houses have been built out. So it will fundamentally transform that neighborhood. And being early in the process, I would strongly encourage inviting those neighborhood leaders into deciding what that road looks like. Because that would be the portion ACHD would build. The actual bridge would be ITD, but the, the lead ups to both sides. And that will fundamentally change that neighborhood. So making sure they're on board to, early, early in the process, you can never be too early. So that we're not in a position where they're taken by surprise.
Thank you Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission side or from the city? Right. Yes, Mayor Simison?
And I think one thing that, well, it sounds like we'll need to have that further dialogue about, based upon the numbers that the director shared, I believe that's for the entire north section of that road. Going back to what Commissioner Hanson said, we're really right now concerned about getting the bridge portion built, that connectivity over the interstate, the, the expansion or the modifications to Linder Road heading north to Franklin. I think that there's can be agreement or disagreement on how much of that should be included at this point in time. But it's really about getting the bridge functioning first and foremost, and then worrying about future changes to Linder at a, at another time, especially from a funding standpoint. Because a 20 million dollar figure is a lot different figure than I've heard recently for just the building of the bridge to make that connection. And that's, so I think that's a great place. There will have to have that communication and that discussion as we move forward. So we're at least in agreement on what should be built when.
Madam President?
Commissioner Goldthorpe?
Yeah, I, you know, that the Linder Bridge and the road might wind up being used by delivery trucks, some very large, some not so large. That almost has a commercial implication, which means to me anyway, that we have to plan a lot more than just putting the bridge in and a two or three lane road. We have to make sure that it's, we'll probably wind up having to, if we put in three preserving for five, putting in some very safe pedestrian and bicycle facilities with a heavy emphasis on getting those school kids to school safely without their mothers having to drive them two blocks. We'll also wind up being, doing the south side of the bridge as well as the north. Because as you know, we, we don't just do one side. It's a very short hop from the bridge to Overland. And, you know, that would be an automatic to, to do and finish that. Anyway, I just think it's absolutely going to be much more than just putting in a bridge and expecting it to handle what was previously described as a possible commercial arterial. Thanks.
Madam President?
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Goldthorpe that you have to plan for more than just the bridge. I, you can't just build the bridge and have the approaches, you know, decided sometime later on. But I also would point out that when you, when you build for three and, or, and preserve for five, you are condemning the people to two times the construction instead of once. And I think that going forward, you need to be very, very careful about what you do, because all it does is, is irritate people beyond belief. Those of you who have been in this valley for a while should remember the Curtis Road fiasco. You never want to put in, you never want to put in a, a project that you end up within a year or two having to tear out or expand. I mean, that just, it's a, it's a colossal waste of money. It's a colossal waste of resources. And it's a colossal waste of goodwill on the part of the public. So if, if this is going to be a commercial corridor and, and all these arterials are going to be built out at three and then you preserve for five, and then you come back and you do five, with the growth that's happening in this county, the bullet needs to be bitten and you just need to go ahead and do what needs to be done and, and then, and then move on to the next area. You do not want to have continual construction. It is, it's just a really bad idea.
Thank you Commissioner Baker.
Commissioner May?
Commissioner Arnold?
I just wanted to clarify, if I understood the director's numbers correctly, the, the amount for ITD to build the bridge was 6 million dollars. And then the estimates that he gave for ACHD was for a five lane road section. And it was somewhere over total about 16 million, 16 and a half. Is that, is that correct? Okay. He's giving me the thumbs up.
Yes, yes. I was just adding up here. Any, any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair and Mayor.
Commissioner Hanson.
As you can see, there will be, need to be these discussions resolved. Looking at the map, it's pretty clear people have built homes pretty close to where Linder is. So my preference obviously would be for preserve for three and build for three, get that done. It's never going to be any wider. But this decision has to be made on the front end rather than push that. I think it's really important to have this decision made on the front end. So, and to understand, we don't, may not need the, we certainly have lots of other connectivity. That's the idea of connectivity. You don't have to widen every road. If you have more connections, more choices for people to cross the freeway.
All right, thank you. So Mayor Simison, I'm encouraged. I think we all understand, and there's a consensus, that the critical part of this is to get ITD on board. And toward that end, we can do a joint letter to start that process and see what, where their, you know, their preference is. And I would think hearing from all these entities and know that we're serious and want to move forward, I think that's the way that we move the needle, working together and having these agreements. So if our staffs can work together on that, and we're going to have some more dialogue going forward. But once we get that commitment, then we start moving into all the details and who does what and what the costs are, et cetera. But we've got to get that commitment upfront.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Are we on agreement? Okay. All right. Very good. So any other comments on this item?
Councilman Cavanagh, I saw you were, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just appreciate the good comments from our highway district commissioners. You know, you are the subject matter experts when it comes to this, and so hearing some of your insight is appreciated. I guess maybe just a clarification about this letter and the timing of its delivery. I know we're all well-intended to be able to get something out in an expedited fashion, but I don't know if there's any conversation about wanting to have this letter delivered in the next 30 days, in the next 60 days before the legislature commences, if there's been any thought or discussion about that particular aspect.
We haven't talked about the timeline. Mayor Simison, you indicated that you were going to get right on that. Sounded like before the end of the year here.
That would be my.
Or correct me if I'm wrong. Okay.
I think before the end of the year would be the intention.
Intention is good. Understand that. I think that's a good, that's a good goal to have. Does anyone have any comments or a different perspective or objection to that? Okay, I think we've got a plan to move forward. So, very good. Good things happen when everybody gets together and we're communicating, so. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the Eagle and Amity roundabout discussion. And Director Wong, I believe Ryan is going to make a presentation.
Yes, ma'am, he is.
All right. So Mayor Simison, Ryan Cutler will be doing a presentation on this project.
Good morning, everybody.
There you are. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Ryan Cutler, I'm going to share my screen real quick so that you can see what I'm talking about. Give me just one second. Hopefully that has worked. So, that is not what I want. Just one second. Okay. Hopefully, everybody can see on my screen. Is it working to see the presentation on your screen? Perfect. Again, my name is Ryan Cutler. I am a senior project manager here at the Ada County Highway District and have been the one that's been in charge of this Eagle Road and Amity Road roundabout, including the widening of Eagle Road between Amity and Victory over the last several years as we've gone through this design process. I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are in the project and a little bit of history going back to when this project started so that we're all on the same page. So here is a little bit of the history of this project. As you're probably aware, right now at Eagle and Amity, there is a single-lane roundabout. The Highway District, in cooperation with the City of Meridian, built that back in 2012 and has been operating ever since. When we built that project out there, the intention was for the single-lane roundabout to function for around 10 years. At that point in time, we would anticipate that there would need to be an adjustment to the roadway. That leads us to this point where we are here now with the traffic volumes up and needed for this intersection to have a little bit of expansion to handle that new traffic load that's going through there. As the city may be aware, the forens development on the northwest corner of this intersection came through and was approved by the city in 2016. If you remember during that application process by the forens team, there was also improvements that needed to be made to the roundabout at Amity and Eagle, and that included a two-lane roundabout with a bypass lane on the northwest corner. Following that, in 2017, August of 2017, the development agreement with ACHD was approved by the commission. And that development agreement required that the developer complete their portion of the work by summer of 2018. The property owner then came back and requested an extension of that development agreement in February 2018, which extended their completion to fall of 2019. Now, as you're all aware, if you've been out there now, nothing's happened on that corner as of yet. I hear that there's plans to move forward sometime soon, but we still have our single-lane roundabout out there. During that entire process, the Highway District began our expansion design project from Amity to Victory. This has been a part of ACHD's plan, going back all the way to 2015 in our five-year work plan to develop this roadway section between Amity and Victory. And that design was completed in June of 2019, kind of corresponding to the timing of when the forens development was being proposed. As time moved on, that development agreement with the property owner on the northwest corner was terminated because nothing was happening at that corner, and they were not prepared or ready to move forward with their application. So, just to give you, you may have seen this already. This is some of the information that we shared at our two public meetings that we held with the communities out there along Eagle Road as we prepared to move forward with this project. Some items that I'd like to point out on the screen, if I could. If you look where my cursor is over to the right, this roadway project includes a, not only 10-foot multi-use pathways, but also a pedestrian crossing at the canal mid-block, and then also a roundabout for the intersection of Eagle and Zaldia. It's a very busy intersection for people coming out of both the Kingsbridge subdivision and the Tuscany subdivision. And that we received a lot of complaints that it was becoming difficult to get out onto that roadway. So as we did this design project, we evaluated that intersection for what would be the best treatment to allow traffic to flow more freely from that subdivision out onto Eagle Road. This is the design that we proposed and took out to the public. You'll also see as we get towards the left of the screen is where the single-lane roundabout is currently and the development that is in the northwest future, the future development on the northwest corner. Again, as part of that development plan that was approved by the city back in 2016, a dual-lane roundabout was proposed and approved at that time. Again, the development agreement did not go through in 2019, and that responsibility for the design and completion of the intersection fell to ACHD. So some improvements that are included in this dual-lane roundabout that I wanted to point out is that there are what we call RFB, pet crossings, or flashing signal lights at each leg of the crosswalk to allow pedestrians to cross safely at their location. We have future connections planned for both the east, south, and west legs of the roadway for when any project comes up in the future in those directions. Then also, as indicated, the south-to-west bypass lane, which is the heaviest movement of traffic at that intersection. So, again, as I stated just a moment ago, the design of this intersection kind of fell to ACHD when the development agreement stopped with the property owner on the northwest corner. And so we began designing that intersection not too many months ago. And that included input and help from the staff at the City of Meridian and also the coordination with the land group, who was or is the representative of the property owner on the northwest corner. There was also some assistance from an outside consultant and ACHD in reviewing the traffic analysis and traffic designs for what was best suited for this intersection. So just this past September, last month, we completed that design in preparation for us to take the project out to bid for construction. Those bids were received and opened on the 7th of October and with central paving being our apparent low bid on the project. We had a meeting yesterday with the commission to review this. The decision there was to postpone the approval of the bid of this project just for one week so that we could have this meeting this morning and make sure that the City of Meridian was informed on all that was taking place. And we still anticipate that our construction notice to proceed will be on the 19th of November, towards the end of November, for construction to take place during this fiscal year on this important project to help out with the congestion in the area. That's all I have this morning as a way of presentation. I would stand for any questions or discussion we might have.
All right. Thank you very much, Ryan. Mayor Simison. Questions or comments from you or your council members?
Well, I can, sorry, I've got to get it out of the screen share. I can start off with some of the conversations, and, you know, I'm not trying to hide the ball. I live in Tuscany. That's known. I'm not a fan of roundabouts generally, but I understand they have their purpose in place in our community and in many communities from that perspective. I did not come in expecting to have a conversation about this. In fact, I had felt like it was a done decision until there were changes that were made to the design, which to me, when the changes were made to the design to add that extra bypass lane, which does change 25% of the project, I felt, at least from my perspective, because quite frankly, many of the people that live in this area are very split. We know that. Whether or not they would prefer a roundabout versus a signal in this area. So it was when that was brought to my attention about that bypass lane that I said, well, maybe it is, we should have another conversation because people are still not excited about the direction this is headed. So that's really what spurred my interest in having further conversation is while decisions have been made, there have been changes to those decisions, and fellows warranted to have a conversation about it, especially when this is a roundabout that's going to be surrounded by lights. So I, on a personal level, look at it and say, okay, so we're really going to allow the effect of movement of people from Sky Mesa, Century Hill Farm, up to Rite Aid along this section with this roundabout because you're going to have a light at Victory and you're going to have a light at Lake Hazel. So it's really not creating a long corridor. And for the record, I am not opposed to roundabouts in this area. I think the roundabout is planned for Locust Grove and Victory is great. But land use patterns have changed over the years. When this was first contemplated and designed, I don't think that the Hill, Century Farm, where you have a YMCA park, a regional significant draw, a grocery store that will likely come in, that really changes the traffic patterns, the desire of the community. And a roundabout can change even people's perception about walkability. You know, at least from my perspective, I don't view a roundabout as something that you're going to walk through or to. I think you're going to get in your car the way everyone does now. No one with the current roundabout, and I understand there's not a lot of infrastructure down here, no one is getting on their bike or walking to the YMCA from Tuscany. Every single person is getting in their car and driving over there. And with the two-lane roundabout and with the bypass lane added into it, I don't see that changing. And that doesn't seem to be, the land use pattern doesn't seem to support the, what I would call the nonstop flow of traffic through an area that has some major draws to this part of the community in it. So I'm going to stop there. I know Councilman Burton also has some comments from other questions and Councilman Cavanagh, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Wallace.
Madam President, Dave Wallace, Deputy Director of Plans and Projects, just to respond to one point with Mayor. Mr. Mayor, the bypass lane has always been planned for this improvement. When we're going to expand it, it's always been there. In fact, it was the property of the northwest that was on the hook to plan it until their development agreement fell apart.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Wallace. All right, I believe.
Ms. Mick.
There you are. All right, welcome. Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you so much. So along with the comments made by the mayor in regard to this roundabout, I know the council member, Cavanagh, myself, maybe some others on our council have been approached by residents that live in Tuscany, and they're very concerned about the ingress egress or the, at the entrance, I believe it looks like it's Rome Drive and also Dartmoor Drive in regard to the crosswalk and how it sits behind parking, these one-stop car waiting at that intersection. There's some major safety concerns in regard to this entrance, especially since, especially in Rome Drive, where the crosswalk goes behind one park, or not parked car, but one stop car. And if you have a vehicle traveling south that then takes a right into Rome Drive into the Tuscany subdivision, maybe early morning, late afternoon, early evening, where sunlight isn't quite visible, very possible that driver's not going to see that pedestrian walking behind the first car where the crosswalk is currently proposed to be made. And so this is, according to Tuscany residents that have reached out to us and myself included, this is a major, major safety hazard in this area that needs to get changed. It certainly needs to get discussed.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Wallace.
Madam President, Dave Wallace, Deputy Director. We have used this particular form of crossing in several places throughout the valley. We have done significant traffic studies. It has been proven to be a safe and effective way. It's actually much safer for those that are pedestrians or cyclists on the multi-use path to have this crossing displaced the way you see it.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Please go ahead.
Is there anywhere in Meridian that you have used this type of crosswalk?
I'll send you images of where we have it elsewhere in the Treasure Valley.
But not in Meridian.
Not in Meridian, though.
So about this, this has been carefully designed, carefully considered by our traffic engineers with just the kind of safety concerns that you have in mind. And as I said, we have it in practice in Ada County now, and it has proven to be not just an effective, but a safe way to do it. Moving the sidewalk all the way to the street in this particular configuration would be a bad idea.
Excuse me? I couldn't hear the gentleman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Moving the sidewalk, as is suggested, moving the crossing of the sidewalk to be adjacent to the street would be a bad idea.
Commissioner May, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, why would it be a bad idea?
It's proven, it's proven engineering, it's proven traffic analysis. In other words, the anecdotal examples that you're postulating just don't, they don't follow engineering analysis. And it's been proven, not just through the examples that we use in the valley, and we've used them in the valley because they are accepted national traffic standards. Again, the key here is the safety of the multi-use path users, both the bicyclists and pedestrians. We wouldn't have put this in here arbitrarily just to strand a car adjacent to the road. It actually took careful consideration. So this is not an atypical use of that crossing.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Yes, please go ahead.
Mr. Wallace, I. Mr. Wallace, I certainly wouldn't insinuate that you guys didn't put any thought into this, or, of course you have. And, and you guys, as Councilmember Cavanagh mentioned earlier, you guys are the, the subject matter experts in this regard. I don't pretend to be smarter. I'm just going off of, you know, feedback from many concerned citizens in that subdivision. On Dartmoor, it's a hair different, although similar, because you have a median in the middle and makes it maybe a little bit different where, where someone could, you know, have, have an area maybe to stop and wait for a passing car that, that may not see them. Do you have any areas within the Ada County area, certainly not in Meridian, but in other areas where you don't have median that's, that, that, where, where, where a person walking across that crosswalk would have some type of safety? An area where they could, they could, where they could stand where, you know, they could wait for the passing car to move past them?
So I, I'll just, a very simple response on this. The engineer who stamped these drawings would not have stamped them without this crossing, this particular type of crossing for a multi-use path to be used the way we have used it. In other words, again, I'm going to go back to the national standards, the proven engineering analysis and examples that we can already find in Ada County. So it's part of the plan now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Further questions, Councilman?
Not right now. I'll, I'll, I'll hold off for a second or two to, to have other people speak on this issue if they wish.
All right. All right. Thank you. Councilman Cavanagh, did you, I think, just a second, Commissioner Goldthorpe?
Oh, I'm happy to answer, Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Okay. Well, we will circle right back. Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Yes, for, for Dave Wallace, having been the, the guy on the commission that chaired almost all of the meetings and hearings and everything else for the year 2016, and the meetings and hearings for this particular project were, were much longer than just that one year. This particular configuration of crossing, was it included in the drawings that were presented in those hearings in 2016?
My memory, yes. This has been on the books since 2015. I'll defer to the project manager who was deeply involved in all of those, Ryan Cutler.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Director Wallace. Yeah, I was waiting to jump in, just want to make sure everybody had their chance to have their comments out there. Yes, this has been a part of our drawings in our public involvement process that showed the 10-foot multi-use pass pathway crossing at this location at the local roadways. Maybe a little bit of history on it. A lot of this design, a simple version of why this design happens this way is, I think when you see cars that pull up to an intersection, especially on a roadway such as Eagle Road, they creep out onto the roadway to get advantage, to get out of that road, and to be able to see left and right down the roadway. What we find during that is when that happens, that pushes the cyclist and the pedestrians out further into the road to go around those vehicles to cross safely to the other side of the road. Therefore, there's some analysis that's done that shows that in this instance, it's actually safer for them to go and curve behind that vehicle that's trying to turn out of the road to not have a conflict with the nose of the vehicle that's trying to make that turn out onto a high-speed roadway. And you may, some of you may remember this, but just about a year ago, this discussion came up in a Meridian City Council meeting with the ACHD representative and the city of Meridian staff. We actually sent over some, some exhibits to show exactly what was happening at this intersection. And that discussion happened just over a year ago about exactly what's being shown on this, on these drawings. So this shouldn't be a new item. It shouldn't be anything new to anybody. This is a discussion we've been having for close to two years now and a discussion we had with the council just over a year ago when this question came up before. So again, we're, this is a design that we're moving to have some already existing in the county and will be moving to on a lot of our multi-use pathways just to alleviate that conflict area between the front of the car and pushing those pedestrians out into the roadway to get around a car that's trying to make a right-hand turn out onto the road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Yeah, the reason that I, that I asked that question and brought it up was because we had at least one additional, maybe two additional neighborhood meetings for this design and one additional public hearing for this whole project, more than we've had for virtually any other project that I've seen in ACHD in the last six years. So I'm very, I'm scratching my head big time to think that there's really any reason that, that many of the neighbors, unless they were completely disinterested or not interested in the process in 2016, are becoming concerned about it now when there's little, if anything, that we can do about it. Thank you. I, also, I have to be off of this call in about four minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you. And, and, you know, Mr. Wallace, Ryan, I appreciate your feedback and I can, I can understand maybe sometimes seeing, reading the frustration on your face to feel like this project has been moving forward for a significant amount of time only to continue to, you know, be asked some, some of these questions. I think what it boils down to, and we're, this would be beneficial, at least for me, to hear from the commission about how the City of Meridian can be a better partner. As I understand, throughout this project, staff, mayors, council members have voiced concern about different elements of this project, going all the way back to the beginning. And what I want to get a good sense of is, if there is something that the Highway District Commission thinks is beneficial or prudent or appropriate, and a local jurisdiction feels differently after hearing feedback from our citizens or from our Transportation Commission, how can we best convey that? And frankly, does our voice count? I think sometimes there is a feeling, perceived frustration from some members of the public that they voice concern or opposition and that, that those comments can, while not in practical application, come as the perception of falling on deaf ears. I, I know that you are all strong civic servants. I know our meeting's going to wrap up. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Baker for her many, many years of service to local jurisdictions and to the Highway District. I know we're not going to probably see each other in person, but I know that you truly care. And so for us, how can we help to better communicate as a city if we have concerns about a project? And what level can we be involved to help shape or evolve projects to better meet the needs of our citizens?
All right. Thank you. First of all, absolutely. We take all input that we get seriously and our staff looks at every project always. Safety is first and foremost. Communication, Councilman, is key. You know, and I believe, Ryan, we have had members of the Meridian staff engaged in this project going forward, correct? And I know there have been updates back and forth to your Transportation Committee and to the council. And so, you know, I want to put that notion that it falls on deaf ears and that any input that we get is dismissed and not taken into account. But at the end of the day, our, we've got a exceptional team of planners and engineers that put best practices into, into place. And so, yeah, no, we, we appreciate the, and we have quite a robust outreach program to, to get that input, not just from the other jurisdictions, but from the residents and citizens of the area as well. So, Ryan, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. Just want to, Councilman wanted to point out, we've had great representation from the City of Meridian. Brian McClair from your office has been a fantastic member of our project team. He's one of our project team members, one of up to 15 or 20 project members that, team members that we use during this process. And President May is correct, obviously, we've got some safety standards that we have to uphold from a national standpoint, from a design standpoint, from an engineer, and you know these things, an engineer being able to stamp a project for it to be properly done. And so my request, I think, and I speak maybe for project managers and for ACHD in general, is just that early communication is the best way to go. You know, you see our five-year work plan that's moving through the process where these projects, projects now that are going to be built in 2025 are, are running through the process now. And the earlier you can get in on that, on that process, the better. We go through the commission for all of our agreements with our consultants to do the design work. That's an opportunity that you can go and talk to the commission and discuss those items. Early on, we have team members that join us throughout the design process, and their, their voice is definitely heard and represents the City of, of Meridian. I know Brian did a great job of coming to you as a council and a mayor and then coming back to me and discussing it with the project team. So I'd encourage that to continue to happen. And then all the way up through the design, just from, and as you're aware, from our standpoint at ACHD, it becomes very difficult to stop a train from moving when we're, you know, four weeks out from a construction project. The earlier we can get in on that from, from the city's perspectives, we will, we will welcome that and take those comments and roll with them during our project team effort.
Absolutely. Commissioner May.
Commissioner Baker. Yeah, thanks, Luke, for those kind words. I really appreciate that. I just, I just think part of the problem also is that these projects, and I, and I mentioned this in our, in our commission meeting yesterday, these projects take so long. You know, it isn't like the Cloverdale Bridge, which was done within a year, which, which was fantastic. And I wish we could do all of our projects like that, but we can't. And so it takes, it takes quite a long time, the planning, you know, the design, the public input, the design, the redesign, and then finally we get out to go to construction. One of the issues is that the population changes, you know? People that may have not lived in Tuscany when this was first proposed and participated early on, don't live there anymore. The new people say, what's going on? And I think one of the things that, and of course, city councils change and mayors change and, and their thoughts change as well. So I think one of the things that might be the best advice perhaps that I can give is just, you know, once the project is complete, unless, and it has gone through the process and has had the public input, it is in the design phase, once, once that has taken place, I think it would be a good idea if the city councils and, you know, tried to go along with that and say, okay, well, the next project will, will have better input into. But when you have the change in city councils and the change in population over that period of time, it's, it is difficult and, and these things are going to arise.
Commissioner May.
I would agree. Commissioner Arnold.
I know we might be a little pressed for time, but before we end this call, I, I would just like to have a clear understanding of what direction the City of Meridian wants us to take at this point. It seems like we have three options. We can proceed and award the contract and go forward as is. And I'm not advocating for any one of these. I just want to understand what the City of Meridian's position is. Or we could proceed with the contract award and process a change order at some point to, to turn this into what it sounds like the city wants, which would be a traditional intersection instead of a roundabout. And of course, there would be some cost to redesign and a cost for a change order. Or the third option is to not proceed with this contract at all and go back to the drawing board. There would be costs there to redesign, of course, and, and a time delay. And perhaps staff could give us some indication of what that time delay would be. So I, I just want to make sure that I have a clear understanding of what the City of Meridian's preferred option is going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Mr. Wallace or Ryan, Director Wong, perhaps you can address that question of Commissioner Arnold, the timeline and any delay, and please, if you will, the cost that would be affected by this.
Commissioner May, Bruce Wong, Director, again, thank you. It's always great to look at options. On this case, though, I think that the option of doing a change order that would completely remove, if that's the case, the, the currently operating roundabout for something different, you're talking about $3 million. And it'd be my thought that at this point, you're, you're stopping the project. You're tossing it out and then we'll redo it for the following year, if that's possible. But I don't think that type of, of, of a change order would, would be executable. Change orders generally look at, well, if we wanted to move something, you know, 10 feet this way or five feet this way, or we wanted to slightly increase the sidewalk width, or if there was another entrance that wanted to be contemplated by the commission or the, or the, or the city, that's a change order. This would be stop the project and start over. And that's just my perspective.
All right. Thank you.
And just a follow-up. So what would the timeline be if we do have to start over? Is it going to, is it going to move the project out a year, two years?
Two years.
Two years.
Easily.
Two years. Okay. So, so then I guess what I need to know in order to make a decision next week is what Meridian's preferred option, given, given that information.
Mayor Simison.
I can speak for myself first and foremost and let each council member. If I go back to what Commissioner Baker said, get it right. That's, that's, that's the most important part of this project, is to get it right and invest money in, in a way that gets it right. My recollection throughout this project is this, it's been a very split conversation amongst the community about which version they actually preferred. It was a, quite frankly, I, I will say a coin flip on which this, which traditional light or roundabout was the preferred option. But the traditional lights are what people know and understand. And from my personal perspective, I would rather see a delay and, and transform to a light along this corridor as compared to move forward with the double lane roundabout, which I don't think is the right thing for the community in this location. So I think that we're not doing the right type of project for the community, maybe right for moving cars, but I don't think it's the right type of investment in infrastructure for the community to afford to exist appropriately in this area. That's my opinion, but I'll ask the other councilmen, they may not be interested in a delay if that's what the outcome is.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner May.
Yes. Council, please go.
Thank you. Rebecca, I appreciate you bringing up that, kind of, it's a blunt ask, which is really appropriate right here, and the opportunity for, for Meridian to give some clarity on this issue. My suggestion would be if, if it's been delayed a week, which we appreciate as well, to allow this conversation to occur, if you're able to do so for another week or two, to allow our council to have a discussion, rather than do this right now here on the fly, I think there's a lot of engineering metrics and specifics that we should be considering. I would suggest we have this on our city agenda next week perhaps, if not the week after, and have our own discussion, review that specific engineering data, the specific options to provide you an informed decision of what our city, how we would collectively respond to that, that good question. I think we could do that very quick. I just wouldn't want to put us at a spot of trying to do that right here on the fly without that, that background data and, and clear delineation of those options to give you a clear recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Councilman.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Councilwoman, good to see you. Go right ahead, please.
Good to see you, too. As Councilwoman Pro speaking, as, as Councilwoman Strader mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, for sure, council member, I'm absorbing everything, learning, listening, but I have had conversations with, with our mayor and I'm very familiar with this area. Also, as a Compass Board member, have, have paid attention to what's happening with the plans and intentions for the future and the, the population growth and expectation that's intended to happen or that's expected to happen, I should say. And at this point in time, I agree with the mayor's assessment that I would like to see this, to see this be a signalized intersection. And if that requires some additional time, I'm, I'm in agreement with that so long as we get this right. However, I appreciate Councilwoman Borton's approach to this, and I think it would be wise on our part to take wise on our part to take a further look. And I would appreciate seeing some more detail about what that would involve, making a more educated decision on behalf of our residents.
Very good, thank you. Any other council members? Councilwoman Strader.
Oh, thank you. I'll defer to the council president if you'd like to.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. For me, in my mind, I, I love the idea Councilwoman Borton suggested of us having a quick conversation on this with some more input. This area has changed and I think that to me is really the key element here. We have this huge regional park and pedestrian safety is really important to me. And I think I'd like some input from your perspective. What's the gold standard of pedestrian safety for this area before we make that decision? And if that's something you can send us, that, that would be very helpful. But I appreciate, you know, if moving forward, you guys can really take that input and we can maybe get together more closely, especially on these projects that are tougher, to make sure that this doesn't happen and you get that feedback. If our staff is working closely with you, but we have a difference of opinion, that may not work, right? So I think it's, it's making sure that that opinion is conveyed to you, not just that we were involved, but that that opinion was taken into account. I know you're all so dedicated and I know you have a lot of expertise. And so, yeah, any information you could provide, but I personally am in favor of a delay to, to discuss if a change is needed, just because I feel like this area has transformed and it's going to keep changing and we need to make sure that we're building something that's going to work for the long run. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Certainly increased communication and dialogue sooner rather than later would be most beneficial and a win-win for all. Thank you very much. All right, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Mayor. So, so grateful for the opportunity to meet with you guys today. Always enjoy dialogue with fellow policymakers and decision makers. In, in regard to the Eagle Road, Tuscany question that I had earlier, if, if, I certainly would like to see that information and that would definitely be a good source, resource for us to have dialogue this next week or the following week. Some, you know, Eagle Road is one of the, if not the busiest road in the state of Idaho. There's a lot going down that road and not, again, I don't want to ensue that you guys haven't done your research or you guys are the experts on, on, on transportation in our valley by any means. However, sometimes a once, one fits all approach in the valley, you know, doesn't always, you know, makes sense or work. And so a little bit more dialogue, a little bit more eyeballs on, on, on these, on these issues certainly won't hurt anything in my opinion. But with that said, grateful for you all, grateful for our collaboration and, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome. Any other comments from council members?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, this is Brett, Councilman Hope.
Oh, yes, please, go right ahead, Councilman.
Real quick, if, if you wouldn't mind a, a brief delay, it's, it's just a matter of us wrapping our minds around the, the twin goals of facilitating traffic, traffic flow, which ACHD is working on. Don't necessarily disagree with engineers who look at the safety. It might be a communication issue with neighbors about why this is the best alternative for some of these turns like into Rome and, and the roundabout. But also, we just need to take the time to look at the, how we enhance the, the characteristics of a neighborhood. And that's really important to us as we, as Meridian is growing, what do these neighborhoods look like? What do they want to be? And does a roundabout, a major roundabout in the middle of that enhance that or does it detract? And how does that fit? So sometimes they're, they're different goals, so we just have to figure out how, how that works. So we would like a little more time as Councilman Borton has requested to figure that out.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Yes, Commissioner Baker, final thoughts? Okay.
I, I just would like to say that we can't, we, okay, this is a very expensive project and it, it would be a major hit to the taxpayers of Ada County, which we serve, not just Meridian. We love Meridian, but we serve all the taxpayers of Ada County. If you people are absolutely interested in, in having a discussion amongst yourselves, I would suggest you put it on your next council meeting, which is what, Monday or Tuesday? I'm, I'm not sure exactly when you meet, Tuesday. Because our next meeting is Wednesday and if we go to Wednesday and say, well, let's give this another week, I mean, we're two weeks out then. The notice to proceed is very close. This project is dependent upon getting the water out of the canals. Once the water goes back into the canals, you can't do anything. So I would suggest you all put this on your agenda for Tuesday and discuss it and then you will have some input into our meeting next week. Right now, I'm, I'm not, I, I'll be honest, I'm not inclined to, to change this project. It's been there forever. I, I didn't, with all due respect, Mayor, I didn't say the project has to be gotten right after five years. I said, project, you know, should be discussed earlier on. It's, and then people should be accepting of it as we move forward, unless something radical changes. And quite frankly, the, 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 Meridian has been on this path for a long time. The developments have been going in this area for a long time and will continue. So I would, I would again suggest, put it on your agenda for Tuesday, discuss it amongst yourselves and then have someone attend our meeting and relay to us what you all discussed.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Final thought, Commissioner Arnold.
Yeah, Madam President.
Just one second, Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Arnold had already, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on, on what Commissioner Baker just said. We are at a critical timing point because some of the work must be done while the water is out of the canal. So if we can't get a decision to proceed, then it's gonna, it, there's no point in going forward with the project because it will delay it for at least a year. And, and I just want to be a good partner with Meridian. I want to understand what Meridian wants for its city. So if we can provide the information to the city of Meridian very quickly so that they can talk about this on Monday, and we could get some input from the city of Meridian for our, our meeting next week, then we can make a decision. Because if we're going to go forward with the project, we're going to have to make that decision, probably within a week, possibly two. I'm looking to our staff for that, but it, it sounds to me like it's something we're going to have to decide next week. So I just want clear direction from the city of Meridian as to, you know, what, what's your direction for your city? How do you want us to proceed?
And we'll make sure all additional information that's been requested is, is sent to the city so that they have that before their, before their meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Commissioner Hanson, final thought?
Yes, Madam, Madam President and Mayor Simison, I, I think you hit the nail on the head in making an observation. I think everybody at ACHD has done their job as we've told them to do their job. We, we measure the movement of cars. Level of service for cars is how we measure the prioritization of projects. This year, finally, we have initiated a process to say, we have to incorporate level of service for pedestrians and bicycles. And attached to our budget agreement was a requirement that staff come forward with a policy in March of 2021 that then gives us the metrics, the ability to weigh, if we're going to improve the level of service for cars, say go from level D to, or level F to level E in 10 years, what does that do to the level of service for pedestrians and bicyclists and people going to businesses? We have no metrics that we use to, to counterbalance. If we move from one level for cars and we say, okay, that's justification, but in fact, we go down two or three levels for bicycles, pedestrians, that people sort of intuitively know, if you do this, this is not going to feel safe. People are not going to want to put a business here. We may have to actually bus kids to the school instead of letting them walk. We need to be able to have those metrics. We will finally have something, because it's already in our software. We use software out of Florida Department of Transportation to do level of service for cars. It has a, it has a, a tool in there for level of service for bicycles and pedestrians. We will actually be evaluating things differently next year. The other is that we also don't measure economic development and we've run into this with all the cities. We're going to put these in, we don't measure the impacts on the businesses. I think we have to have a process where you come in early and say, the cities, we're the land you sit, we have to live with the economic impacts of your decisions. Let us do that evaluation of whether this is going to encourage business envelop, investment or discourage it so that we can then say, ah, that's not a great priority, let's put it into this priority. Or it can also weigh into the design of, of the intersection. So it's not just about the movement of cars, it might be about access, improved and creative access to ensure investment. Because of course, both ACHD and the city has to rely on property taxes for our income. And if we don't really have some sort of quantitative return on investment. So I think it's appropriate that you're asking us, let's do this right. Because in the long run, if it actually increases costs and decreases value, then we shouldn't be doing it this way. We should do it right because it's going to be there, when you and I are both in the grave, it's still going to be there. So we need to get this right, whether water's in the canal this year or the next year or the next year, let's get this right. So just know that we will have different tools next year and that we should develop a process that incorporates the city and understanding the economic impacts of our decisions. Because we're quite unique, as you know, in this, normally it would be, if it was in another county, you'd be doing it yourself. But we have these two entities and we do not have these tools or we don't use these tools currently in terms of determining what is or isn't the best design. And so I think you're seeing a change, a shift. It's slow, but you're seeing that shift. And so that might be helpful in your, entering into your discussions as to what you might request of ACHD on this project.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hanson. All right, Mayor Simison, our takeaways, you're going to take the lead on the letter. We're going to do the joint letter for the ITD, to the ITD Board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to get some additional information to you and your council so that you can have that in preparation for your meeting on Tuesday. And then we will expect to hear back from you after that. And am I missing anything?
Nope, we, we will discuss this next Tuesday and convey that information back. We appreciate Commissioner Arnold making that, giving us at least that ability to provide that input. And we understand ACHD will make the final decision as it relates to it, but we'll give you our two cents on what, as a collective body, we see as the right approach. And hopefully you will take that into consideration when you decide whether not to move forward or not.
All right. And then the other takeaway, increased communication, keep in touch, reach out and work together. So that's when good things happen. So we appreciate everybody joining us this morning, good discussion. And with that, I will, with no further comments, I will adjourn the ACHD commission. And Mayor Simison, if you would like to do that for your members.
I would also take an accept a motion from our council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I can move second to adjourn the meeting. That was a fair request by Senator I.
Aye.
Appose nay? The ayes have it and we are adjourned.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great day, everyone. All right. Bye-bye.